Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. And we'll start the meeting off with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Stone.
Thank you. The school board has chosen to imply that our current crisis is due to the SBEA's walking out of the last negotiating session. We are here this evening to set the record straight. It should be noted that the teachers of Central School cannot be here tonight with their colleagues because they are working. It's their open house, or they would be standing here shoulder to shoulder with us. The rest of us are here tonight to make it clear that we will not accept a proposal from the board that is so far outside of the norms that have now clearly been established in negotiations throughout Chittenden County. The board is out of touch with its teachers, who have made it clear that maintaining their health care is one of their highest priorities. The board is out of touch with the school board's insurance trust, an organization that has partnered with teachers to provide insurance at reasonable rates for the past 25 years. In fact, the school board's insurance trust advises no change in health care at this juncture for South Burlington and all other school districts in Vermont. The board is out of touch with every other district in the county, who have now settled their contracts with no change in health insurance policy. By far, the majority of the contracts are for multiple years, and not one of them makes alterations to health insurance that in any way would jeopardize grandfathered status. The board is out of touch with our community, who have consistently demonstrated their support for fair and reasonable settlements. This school board owes the South Burlington community their very best effort, especially at this 11th hour. The stakes are high. The board is out of touch with the Fact Finder, who has provided us with recommendations that can, with good faith and diligence, lead us to a settlement acceptable to all parties. Walking away from the Fact Finder report will not lead to a settlement. The board's proposal is not fair, and it's not reasonable. While the health care storm rages around us, school districts all around us understand the wisdom in battening down the hatches and weathering the storm. It serves the interests of both sides during this interim period to maintain the status quo and protect grandfathered status. Prudent adjustments will be made once the Vermont Legislature and the United States Congress determine the future of health care. Reckless decisions in the interim are not in anyone's best interest. While health care is not the sole issue that separates us, it is a critical issue, and we are here to let you know that we have carefully considered and rejected what you call a win-win. Clearly, we don't see it that way, nor did any other teachers or school boards in Chittenden County. We would ask that you consider not only the united voice of your teachers, demonstrated by our presence here this evening, but also the professionalism and high performance being exhibited by South Burlington's teachers, day in and day out. We have been and continue to be ready to negotiate using the Fact Finder's recommendations as a basis for a settlement. We charge you with doing the same.
I hope some of you will consider staying and hearing the board's response to Mr. Stone's statement. The board is equally interested in reaching a settlement with the SBEA. Despite what some of you may believe, the board has an obligation and desire to fairly represent all community stakeholders in delivering a quality public education in South Burlington, and that charge most certainly includes our excellent teaching staff. While remaining open to further discussions, the board wants to be clear that its current proposal to the SBEA provides more money to employees than the Fact Finder's report, that teacher salaries continue to be at the top of those offered to peers in Chittenden County, and that the association's negotiating team has not provided any input to prove that the health care benefits proposed by the board are materially disadvantage, disadvantageous to employees in either the quality of care received or financially. The incremental cost to the district alone over three years of preserving the current health care plan is about $1 million. This option will forego any savings for both parties associated with reduced premiums from an alternative VHI plan. Average employee savings under the board's proposal are about $3,500. The board has not received any input from the association's negotiating team on how they would propose to offset some, if not all, the incremental expense to taxpayers of preserving the current health care benefit, or the rationale to forego savings with an alternative plan. Health care benefits are an important subject to the community and the school district. We take our obligation to provide a quality health care plan at an affordable cost to our employees very seriously. I want to open the floor for any questions regarding the board's proposal. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. And we have any amendments to the agenda?
We're removing item number 13, and we're going to add to announcements, we're going to add the Rowland Foundation update that we'll add in addition. That's all I have.
Great. All right, we'll move to announcements.
So, Neerja, welcome. So, again, part of our process has been to combine both announcements and her report, or whatever she wishes to share with us, so we'll turn it over to you.
So, we have a couple announcements. The FH Tuttle Middle School Open House is rescheduled for September 30th from 6:15 to 8:35. And then, the High School Open House is this September 18th, I believe, between 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Another reminder, October 1st school board meeting has been rescheduled to Thursday, October 2nd instead. The Chamberlain School is hosting Troy Wonderly, I believe that's pronounced.
I'm glad you pronounced that.
From the Wonderly's Big Top Adventures, students are hard at work learning, practicing, and performing new circus skills, which is pretty awesome. On Thursday, September 25th, Chamberlain will hold a performance at South Burlington High School in the gymnasium at 6:30. And Chamberlain School also would like to extend an invitation to members of the school board and all your families. And lastly, Orchard School will hold its international walk to School Day on Wednesday, October 8th. And as far as the student report, one thing is that the student council is starting to plan homecoming, which is just three to four weeks down the road, so that's pretty exciting. Get some school spirit in there. And everything's just starting to settle down in high school, which is pretty awesome. And lastly, our previous student council meeting, we elected the next junior representative for the school board, which is going to be Nerla Desai, and she'll probably get in contact with you guys pretty soon, but I'm excited to have her next to me.
Thank you, Neerja.
Thank you.
You want to add the update on the Rowland?
Yes, there's been a request from John Painter to have a board participant in the Rowland Foundation work that he's had a year sabbatical to work on, and I didn't know if, I know a couple of you have responded, but I didn't know about others' availability or willingness to participate.
So, has somebody said they want to do it?
I don't think anyone has committed yet. I would say I do have an interest, and I think I would try to make myself available if other board members are not able to.
I nominate you.
Got it.
I'd be interested as well, but hopefully, starting January, I-
It'll be busier.
Good point, yeah.
I just, I'm very interested, it's just that the time commitment during the day, I wouldn't be able to make that, but that said, it would be great if the board could have updates on the work that John's doing periodically.
So, why don't we provide that feedback to John, and then maybe also consider getting him on a future agenda as well?
Got it. Thank you.
Good. All right, we'll move on to city-school collaboration.
Again, we are in, or we're out of sync a little bit, Kevin, Pam, myself, and Elizabeth, around getting our meetings together. We do have them scheduled. They're going to be about once a month, but we know there's other activity in the city that's going to actually bring us together more than that, so we did not have our one this week. However, you did have a steering committee, of which I was not at, so I think it may be fitting just to let people know that some of the things that you talked about were the Chamberlain-Burlington grant project that's currently in play and needs to get moving. And I think in addition, you had a long conversation about the CIP plan and the stewardship plan, and again, John and Tom and Dan and Chris Shaw shared, I believe, important information. Again, I heard that was very informative. You did talk briefly about the resolution, the property tax resolution, and kind of understanding a little bit about that, the implications of that. And then, I do know that you did not get to master planning and visioning, but again, I think part of our desire to keep this on is to keep you updated around some of the happenings, or the public around the happenings between city and school, which I think moves right in, Elizabeth, to the next agenda item unless there's questions around city-school collaboration.
I think, just to step back, I don't know if any other board members had input, but because there was such a lively discussion on the city council's resolution on education funding reform, I do think that should be a topic that we consider collaborating, if first, only in our smaller sessions, David, to potentially come up with a revised resolution that might reflect a coordinated resolution from both the city and the school that would be directed at our legislators. I think we, I think the board, or I think the board was a little bit surprised at the speed the council took around that resolution, and have become aware since that, that although the intent was, was well-founded following the large municipalities meeting that occurred at the high school, that the, kind of the collateral effect of just capping the tax rate may have some serious implications for, for school funding. So, I don't know what the right answer is, but I do think there's, given, given all of the collaborative work we're doing, there might be an opportunity to kind of come up with something that could be refreshed by the city, but that might be more of a coordinated message to our legislators.
I think that makes all the sense in the world, that we get together and collaborate. It's disappointing that the city moved and got away from the situation without having the benefit of the insight from the board as to what some of the implications might be. And, you know, it's not a simple problem, so it needs, it needs a coordinated and collaborative approach to try to figure out something that can, on balance, solve the problem that we're facing.
I think, you know, just, again, I wasn't there, so I want to be fair to that, but I do know, at least from Kevin and his staff, that there is a willingness to collaborate, for sure. I think this kind of crept up on them a little bit around, as a result of the meeting that they had with the city managers and interested parties, that, you know, there was some inertia that came, like, what do we do out of that? And I think this quickly, quickly evolved, and I think we could have been a much more involved player. I think they know that. And I think education funding, simply just trying to put a quick fix, it's not quite that easy. And so, what I'm hearing is you'd like to work together with them to maybe come up with a shared resolution, and perhaps, again, connected to that would be put on a future agenda item for more conversation.
And ideally, timing-wise, would be something that would get to the legislators before the session started.
Correct, yes.
Can we, when we get to the next agenda, can we put that on for, if there's time, a decent chunk of time for discussion here? That'll be the day after the regional meeting, October 2nd, when we will hear from Rebecca Holcomb, and they have some better idea of what some options are, and while it's fresh in our mind, maybe plan on doing that.
Are we hearing from Rebecca Holcomb of the first? She's coming to the meeting.
She's, that's the plan. She is trying to make it to all the regional meetings, so we, the, all-member meeting, superintendents, she was there, and there is a, she's, again, her attempt is to get to all the regional meetings, and again-
They're doing six meetings instead of 12. We're going to be meeting with Franklin Coney.
Yeah, so then, and we're at Milton, yeah, so, yeah.
Good. So, we'll segue into a significant topic, master planning and financial stewardship.
Yep. So, I would like, love to be able to hand something out to you. I'm, I'm fortunate with, I really did plan to have stuff for you. This week has not been a great week for me around prepping, although we've been doing an awful lot of work, Kevin Dorn, myself and his staff, my staff, around kind of coordinating and putting things together. Time is of the essence right now with master planning and visioning. I say that because, you know, we have, you know, it's important that while we have interest and we put it out on the table, there's definitely need to be a timeline. So, again, there's several iterations that we've gone through. One of the things that we're currently at, just to give you a quick update, is the establishment of a task force or a committee that essentially will meet to guide the process. We're in the, we're in the, right now, kind of identifying critical players. We obviously have individuals that participated in some variety of things, both city and school, and I'll just name, like, the fifth grade group. We had some people that were very interested in staying connected to the work, so we want to make sure that it's all-inclusive, not just, you know, parents, but community members, city folks as well. So, we're working to name that group of individuals, probably somewhere in that 9 to 15 number, to be part of a, a task force that can help guide and support the process, so that's one. Two is the dates, and as you know, we've got a lot of conflicting dates, as you know how it is with our own board stuff. What we're really trying to be mindful is that we don't piggyback on something that takes people away from, and this is particularly true with the community forums. Right now, we have scheduled four, kind of with that first, with a kickoff, which will be presenting kind of the issues at hand that we know of. And again, it's likely we'll get some additional feedback, but that's really the importance of the first community meeting, and then the flow from there will be about information gathering, the sharing of, of some of that information as we move forward to make some decisions. Again, this will be facilitated by Frank Locker, who did our work eight years ago. So, again, I'm confident about, you know, the players at this point. I do think it's important, and I would, I'm going to suggest at the end that we, I ask for two reps from the board that can assist me in kind of looking at this plan so that we're ready to share at our next meeting. But part of that is also about the cost. I did put some money in the budget for master planning, but the scope of it is certainly a little bit beyond. And again, I want to be really clear with the board, there's also a shared cost by the city, and so I want to make sure that there's an equal share between school and city on the cost to do this work. And as I said earlier, a couple reps would be desirable for me, right off, you know, early next week, to be able to sit down and to begin to understand and to help me with kind of the cross-scheduling city, school, and what our want and need is. That then will go to the board, I probably would send that out prior to the next board meeting, so that then it would be able to be vetted and affirmed at that board meeting, being, trying to be conscious of time. So, let me pause and answer any questions that you have.
Now, my understanding, David, is that the first public session is scheduled for October. Is that accurate?
That's what's currently on there, Elizabeth, but when we, when we backwards-plan a little bit, you know, with marketing and information going out, we've really got to, I've got to be careful of, of that, along with the timeline and dates. We don't want to get too much later than that, though.
It was there, what's the, what was the determination for four public sessions?
Well, we think kind of the first, the mindset here is, the first really is to, to share kind of where we are, what are the, some of the known desires, wants, needs, and concerns of the city and school, first one. So, this is, basically, will be kind of the city center flyby, as well as some of the municipal situations and school function, a little bit of just, this is what we're, this is what we're looking at in the very near future, with some short, with some table group discussions that allow for people to ask other questions and/or other concerns, and then, as a result, we put the data together with enrollment, city wants and needs. We look at a variety of other things that are, that are at play. And then, the second one is to be able to come back, second and third really, are to be able to come back and kind of tease out those, those components, and obviously, the second and third, to quell those out, and then, really, the fourth one is to really conclude about where we, where we think is appropriate as a community, and to, and to hear essentially the feedback from the master planning and visioning work, so that people are on the same page.
So, so one of the things that has been discussed, and I don't know if it's in the proposal or in the scope of the project, was that the public sessions not necessarily be greenfield discussions, meaning kind of the blue-sky what-ifs, that perhaps the, the smaller steering committee group would have an opportunity to work with Locker, to come up with kind of a status quo option and the implications of that, and then, a couple of alternatives, straw man alternatives, that had some level of specificity around pros and cons, ballpark costs, whatever, a framework that allows the public input to be a little more reactive to specific straw models relative to the status quo. Is that how the project is scoped right now?
Right now, we're, absolutely. I think we have the makings of that in that first kind of meeting, the ability to kind of look at kind of the phase, what are we up against, and kind of the status quo. And then, from that, though, I think that there's going to be a desire for others to make sure they're, they're weighing in, to provide an option for what might be, you know, city-related library, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, as well as school information that might be helping to affirm that second phase. So, we kind of see that first phase is, you know, recognizing and informing the community about where we are right now, what's, what we're up against in the next few years. So, again, I think it's not easy for you to see it, because it's not laid out to you in that way, and again, part of that is, you know, I haven't provided it. So, again, I'm wanting to do that in a better way than just verbally talking about it, but I, I think it's important that people know that it's, it's right upon us, and again, I don't, we want to make sure that people are informed and don't have obstacles in their schedules, and there's an adequate amount of time for people to participate, as well as a task force that we think has really important support, meaning and directional support for the whole group, you know, for the group as they move through. So, that will be part of, you know, kind of running that through a couple board reps and a couple counselors around, here's where we are and this is where we're planning. So, ideally, it would have been great that we had this confirming more tonight with some previous dialogue, both city on Monday and you folks tonight, although I probably would have said we would have been first, and then the city second, but anyway, that's, that's where we're at.
So, can you tell us in a general sense, you said you're above budget, can you tell us in a general sense what expenses you're incurring through this process?
Well, we have, we have master planning and visioning work, which is the Frank Locker firm. We have our demographic work that needs to be done, so it's not as simple as the Bill Smith. Bill Smith is, has been our demographer for many years early, and then took a break, and we brought him back. He's retired. And this demographic study that they do, again, connected to Locker, is much more comprehensive around, you know, disruptions within the city, you know, all kinds of other factors that go into that, around looking at, you know, what is your need, both city, school. And then, Culp Associates, which is a group that we would like to have, help us with kind of the facilitation of the, of the community meetings, so that participants can be participating, like yourselves, and administrators and counselors, without feeling that we're facilitating those conversations. So, there's some resources in there for them as well, and then data gathering as well for, you know, pulling together the analysis of the work. John?
Right, the cost of appraisals?
Yep, thank you.
And the cost of public relations marketing?
Thank you.
We have bids out, we receive bids back, and we're, so there's a lot of costs involved.
Right, and so, is it a 50/50 split?
That's part of the work that we have. I think, you know, between myself and Kevin, we've certainly looked at that. They definitely have identified resources within their budget. Again, some of it was unplanned, because we didn't necessarily understand the scope. I don't really want to say, you know, if it's 50/50, 60/40. We're going to go down through kind of what are school-only components, and it's hard to say whether they're school-only, but some things like appraisal may be school-only, although if we weren't being pushed in certain ways, there may be a cost sharing. So, we're going to need to go through that in a, in an equitable way, and again, that will be important, you know, kind of feedback from you folks. We've done some of that discussion, but it would be wrong for me to, to share too much of where we're at with that. So, those are, those are definitely, you know, known kind of expenses. We want to do this right, we want to do it inclusive of the entire community, and we want to make sure that people's, you know, their voices are heard, and, you know, that we end up with a, with a outcome that we believe is right and appropriate at school and city.
Other board comments?
So, you, you're looking for volunteers, or are we going to-
Yeah, I would like a couple reps, a couple board members.
I'd be interested in helping if that makes some sense.
If nobody else is eager.
We'll find you another one.
Yeah, I have.
So, so your, your proposal is to sort of work with a subcommittee of the board, David, versus calling a special meeting?
Correct.
To update the full board?
Right. I, I just think it would be, it's important for, in order to move on some of this, it's going to be hard to digest all of it at once, so we can get some general guidance around where we're, you know, what we're doing, and again, my direction is that the city's doing, is going to do the same thing. So, that's my suggestion. Again, it doesn't take the power away from the board, it would then allow for the information to be received for you, and then we can have some actions on, on our, on our upcoming meeting. Again, with that said, there's going to be some readjustments to the, slight readjustments, and again, we've been ongoing adjustments to our calendar, so there's not going to be a perfect four-community-meeting scenario, you know, that we can come up with, but as long as we publicize them and get them out there, we, we believe that we'll be in a, in a good place, so.
Okay. Comments from the public? All right, we'll move on to agenda item nine.
So, my report. So, again, part of this is that, as John indicated, part of the master planning and visioning, and again, I think this goes right along with asking a couple board members, which can cite, can segue right into this, master planning, but because the request for public relations services is connected to master planning, although not solely master planning, I am trying to position the district in a place where we can, and again, I think you'll see this in the budget in the future, perhaps, that I need to put some additional resources into what I'm going to call public relations person, officer, something of that nature, where we're really trying to stay ahead of, you know, the social media, our responses, and some of our bigger items that come along the way.
So, was this a, just, sorry, quick question, was this a coordinated city-school bid?
It was not coordinated with them, although it is known of them, and again, part of the shared cost would be from them for this service. Again, it's not solely for master planning and visioning, but it's a big part of it. The second part is enrollment update, and I know by your side you have a single handout, and I would have, I would have liked to have included the elementary FTEs for you, so that's coming around now. I would have liked to have included that in your packet, but I did not, unfortunately, so that's coming around now. And that, I know, was a request of the board at the last meeting, and again, this is just elementary, and unfortunately, I do not have, I did not include the, the FTEs, so I'm still not totally complete on the middle school, high school FTE component. So, again, this is an ongoing, this is a living document that changes are made, it's part of on our, on our, on our shared document that, that gets updated. So, again, I think a couple things to note, and again, we did this last time, but looking at some of the, where the changes are happening on your big graph, I alluded to that last meeting, and a question that came up last time was around the resident and non-resident student. And a question that came up last time was around the resident and non-resident student transitions and changes. And so that's included in here kind of from the thirteen fourteen year to the fourteen fifteen year. So certainly, it indicates that our resident student population is is going down. At the same time, we've been holding ourselves, you know, stable or close to stable based on our incoming students, our non-resident population, as you can see from the fourteen fifteen non-resident at one sixty-one up from home thirty-one. So let me pause and answer any questions that you have. Again, I'm going to try to keep this more on an ongoing basis, just enrollment, data fluctuations throughout the year. Again, this is a big part of what drives budget too, as you know, around FTE allotment. This year, when we set the budget, we talked about teacher allocation, particularly at our incoming enrollments in kindergarten across all three of our elementary schools. And that really remained in flux right up to the very end. And we're at currently at sixty-six at Orchard, and we, I added, you approved the addition of that fourth teacher. Initially, I thought we'd be closer to seventy. Again, that's dropped down a type, a slight bit. But again, we're at that that sixty-six. I don't have any crystal ball on how to predict that. That's a, that remains a volatile area. And obviously, the assignment of FTEs based on the numbers that are smaller is also, you know, a concern. And particularly, when you look at numbers of twenty-nine, it's it's, and they get down to the twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-six, it's hard to have as one, but too small for two.
So I have a question. When you look at at state data on class sizes and such, it shows much smaller student-teacher ratios than this, like around twelve or thirteen for our elementary schools. Is that because, is that because that counts the the art teacher, the music teacher, all FTEs? Does it cover pair educators? I I'm just trying to compare apples to apples because one of the big driving factors that you hear is is driving the cost in the state is the enrollment going down in the small class size. And I'd really like to be able to reconcile what I'm looking at here with what folks at the state level are looking at in the agency of education and such.
Fair question. Inconsistent, I would say, across the state in the data share. And let me be clear about that. Generally, the FTEs to teachers to student ratio is factored by licensed and qualified teachers. So that in and of itself is inconsistently reported, whether all librarians are in that mix or not. What I have seen over the past years is that it's not one hundred percent consistent across the state. For us, this is simply a ratio of a classroom teacher to the number of students in that particular classroom. It does not factor in a literacy teacher, a math teacher, a librarian, and again, that list can go on. So my worry is that in order to do it really consistently, you know, with fidelity across the state, I I'm quite quite concerned that that could be done in a in a consistent way. It does vary according to how some schools implement certain programs because sometimes a literacy teacher may be a co-teacher. So they are included, but somebody might exclude them. So again, to be really clear with you, these are different. This does not factor in all of our teaching core. I do have other data that we use around budgeting, which I'm happy to share with you, around kind of our whole FTEs and what that looks like by school. So we have that more, you know, specifically broken out when we look at trying to provide resources consistently across our own, our own schools based on need. But so they are inconsistent. This is not that data. And I have some real, still real questions around how the state collects and how they record it. I don't know, Stuart, you want to add anything to that?
I just, the other day, I heard the data that, you know, and and paraprofessionals are not usually counted in in that count, but art teachers would be and so on, but that actually the average in Vermont elementary schools has gotten to nine as the average, which is well below our average, which if you counted in everybody, was about twelve point three last time we looked, twelve point four.
But again, if it's not measured the same way.
How do you, how do you compare those numbers?
But that's that's one of the questions, and I think David raises good questions.
Someone using a metric ruler and the other one's using an English ruler.
But the metric is supposed to be all licensed teachers when they, when you see that number about twelve, thirteen, ten statewide, other states, generally the metric, but again, whether that's counting librarians or not, those are the pieces the state has never, you know, really made the data a hundred percent. But that's the ratio that's supposed to be used, not just classroom teachers.
Thank you, Stuart. I think the other thing is important is that even in our budget book, right, we we kind of do the, a component of that summary of on the FTEs that that I've shared with you before, we have an FTE to student allocation and for some of, and we generally on the left side, we have what's what's in that. And again, that's much more representative of the adult-to-student ratio. But to be able to compare that to others to others in the state is still not, would not be one hundred percent accurate.
Even that is a problem, right? Because we, some people include various enterprises, if you will, in that count and others don't, transportation and the like.
Yep, that's correct. So that that said, I I don't want to be so vague here that the trend data isn't something that is available. You know, we we definitely know across the state, and I think Stuart alluded to that, is as our enrollment goes down and our our FTE in adults, you know, stays the same or slightly grows, you obviously get the picture. And I would say that we're not one hundred percent out of that. We're really mindful around, you know, our our resources and our student population. But as you know, if you only go down by twenty-five students, where those twenty-five students fall doesn't necessarily mean you can make a one FTE reduction based on that. And then fractionization of of an FTE is not always easy either, based on either a union contract and how you do that or how you provide then the support based on somebody going to be seventy percent here and thirty percent there. You got to factor in other schedules and conflicts. So it's not quite as easy, as you know, but I want to be really clear. There's definitely a downward turning or a ratio that certainly is becoming more and more evident in the state.
I'd like to turn to these. So I don't want to cut this discussion short, but looking through these enrolled student things, it's, it strikes me that we have two major categories that I hope we can understand what's behind them. The one is people that are just transferring out of the, out of the, out of the state or the country, okay? They're obviously not going to come here once that happens. But and and I don't know whether that was factored into our demographic stuff in this, at this level or not. And the second thing, and that seems to be true in all the, all the, all the categories here, elementary, middle school, high school. And the other is, which I totally don't understand, is the transfer to other public schools in Vermont. If you're a South Burlington resident, can you do that? Does that really happen?
Sure you can.
It doesn't really happen?
As long as you reside in that, in the, in the town in which you then moved to, then you're able to go to that school.
So these were presumably people that were residents of other school districts to begin with and then just went home?
No.
Or they just moved communities.
They moved in, so they they were South Burlington residents.
Or they moved themselves, the families moved.
And they moved to, you know, Barry because of.
Seems like everybody's leaving South Burlington that has children.
Along that line, I I was surprised at the number in high school, the twenty-eight. That that just surprised me. But do you have any thoughts about that?
Well, again, we haven't, we haven't necessarily been tracking, you know, the trend data over time, so I I want to be careful in how I speculate. I do think, you know, here again, Chittenden County has its own unique situations around jobs, home values, you know, availability, you know, of of a job. And so I think that those are driving forces. I think in some ways, we're looking at our more diverse, healthy organ, our healthy community also having more transient type of situations. So I think we're definitely receiving, you know, families in, they're figuring out Chittenden County and beyond and finding out their their next steps. So again, I, those are speculative. Again, part of our work around the data collection that Ray Mann is doing for us, and again, this is, these are some examples of us having on our shared server where this data updates off of our attendance on an ongoing basis where we can be looking at it and recognizing what we can do. I will tell you that I think, you know, this goes right in harmony with city-related pieces around people that are choosing to move into our community, businesses that are here to help employ our our community, et cetera. So there's, there's likely more to the story here that can be affirmed by by city and and business.
Would it be possible to get more information on the, on that category of transfer to another public school?
Specific, like just mom or dad took a job somewhere else and had to move?
It, it sounded like it may or may not have been a physical move. I'm confused by that category.
They 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 simply transferred somewhere mid-year to another school within Vermont.
So they must have moved.
Yep. So they, well, transfers last move, they transferred to another, they moved.
Is it a school choice option in there?
No.
So this is just a move out of South Burlington?
Do we have any comparable data for move-ins?
Like from other communities, yeah, I don't, we haven't, again, part of the.
It'd be interesting to know. Look, this is very, very premature, but I mean, one can look at this stuff and say, look, there's something going on that says that when people get their students up to about the high school age, they leave South Burlington.
Right, and then, but then then our surrounding communities want to send them here, so it's, you know.
From a community standpoint, I think, because I would presume that most of those parents and guardians are now at the their primary earning stage of their life, right? And that's a resource the community may not want to lose.
Yeah. Part of this is, you know, I, again, I don't, we don't have, I don't have hard data on this. You know, we do have a number of students that choose to go on to, you know, preparatory, another preparatory school. There's a variety of interests in which they, you know, may want to do such a thing. So again, to give you a raw number on that, those are certainly possibilities where, you know, we have a, we have a good number, I know, that do that.
Do we have, do we have any data on private school participation by South Burlington residents?
We'll have to, we'd have to dig on that a little bit more. Again, what we get typically is at the time of a transition, we, you know, we get kind of anecdotal feedback. We don't have any formal, you know, other than the fact that they have to register at another publicly approved or approved program so we can send records. You don't just give families' record as part of the the records law. You have to, they have to be requested.
But you must have a log of the records you send.
Yeah, so we we should be able to do a better job and and be able to gather some of that. But part.
I was just going to say, I mean, that's a loss of forty-eight students total in one school year. That that just seems, I I have never looked at this data before, but that seems significant to me. And that's all for a variety of reasons, but it's still forty-eight high school students in one school year.
Right, and that you you see that the the net result at the high school is you're up a little bit at the high school. So what has been the trend data over time, you know, as far as students that are choosing other alternatives outside of our high school and those that are choosing our high, you know, from outside? So I I don't, I don't know, we're happy, you know, I'm happy to to look at this a little bit more as part of our work to.
Well, I think, I mean, one of the challenges, I think, when we're talking about enrollment numbers is the reliance on, you know, non-resident students at the high school level and the, the, you know, the driving factor for the the downturn of South Burlington students. And I think, you know, for planning purposes, that's going to make the job a little bit challenging. I don't know what will be material, but I I would agree with Diane. I think seeing the numbers this way, I guess I was always under the impression we were netting out just sort of a stable number with a little, you know, small declines over time, but relatively flat. But what we're really seeing is a little more significant decline in the resident offset by higher numbers of non-residential students, which does create a a challenge for planning purposes.
No question. Again, part of the reason that we're doing this, you know, is that we are able to articulate and plan accordingly for budget. And I will tell you that this, you know, while I, you know, I've reported the the information, it is concerning. Our resident student population in our FTE, our equalized pupil account, is going to be down. And for each one of those that are down comes with the the revenue that comes from the state. So when you look at volatility and liability in that area, we typically have been able to plan on our FTEs resident, correct? That's, that's more of a known entity. Our outside, you know, our non-resident tuition paying, you know, is, we we don't really have great numbers to predict that. And so this is a concern to us right now around our planning for budget future, around the FTE allocation and our ADM count that we're about to get in October. We submit October first, we get it back November.
Equalized pupils come December fifteen. It'll certainly affect the equalized pupils this year significantly.
Right. So, yeah, so it's, I mean, I'm trying to provide you with probably more detail than you want, some maybe not enough. But, I mean, part of our work is to try to also be out there a little bit informing and connecting with those that may be wanting to send to us.
So when when would we anticipate additional information on on this, on these data? Because you said it wasn't kind of all filled in yet.
Well, the the high school data isn't, you know, isn't, isn't there for you, which is kind of similar to the FTE data. I mean, there's a, it should have been copied on the back. So I'll bring that back to you with the high school, middle school data. And then what I will tell you is that as we progress through the budget process, which is part of what administrators and I will begin working on, this is a component of, obviously, a driving component of our budget process.
So we'll keep enrollment on for the ten-two meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think it's fine because again, I owe you that high school, middle school stuff. And again, disaggregating, disaggregating the data or rolling it up is something that I'll continue to work on. I won't be able to promise that I'll be able to fill all that in for you for the next meeting, though.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to agenda item ten, audit of teacher performance evaluation practice.
So again, this is work that, well, I'll just say was overdue on my part in preparing and getting an RFP. But the board did have the opportunity to solicit the services of Sarah Denny. And I know that she did the work. I know that Martin and Julie were two board reps that supported and had the opportunity to review the RFP, interview candidates, and then meet with kind of the final findings and are able, I think, to provide a little bit of an overview of of that process.
So, you know, I think that the the board took this on mostly so that we could figure out how we're doing with evaluating teachers. And I think anybody who listened to the conversations for for a couple of years now that we've had knows that it was hard for us. We couldn't do direct inspection on this. There was no way we could find to do that. So we hired this out to Sarah Denny, who's actually a a prior educator, right, David?
Yes.
We think she did a great job. She's, she sampled thirty-six, she ended up looking at thirty-six random evaluations and she interviewed all of the administrators as well. And overall, I think she had really good things to say about our evaluations, which is not surprising to us, of course. So basically, I think I should read the commendations and the recommendations so that the audience gets them. These were her commendations. Among the pool of evaluations reviewed for this report, there were some excellent examples of every aspect of the evaluation process. Each of the evaluators was distinguished at something, but here are some notable examples. Three of the ten evaluators stood out as including quotations and incidents observed that were on point and helped build strong conclusions. Three of the ten relied on actual rubrics, not selecting some components from the rubric but for discussion in paragraph form to describe all four domains, thus giving a quick, clear picture of skills. Ten of the ten encouraged teachers with common. Ten of the ten encouraged teachers with commendations based on observation. Eight of the ten used recommendations to help with future improvement. The fact that all of the administrators are aware of the daily environment in classrooms gives credibility to what they write in evaluations. They recognize authentic behavior because of their frequent circulation. Evaluators were forthcoming and reflecting on their own training needs. This is a group committed to high standards for their schools. They intend to maintain high standards through meaningful evaluation. So that's good. Her recommendations for, for our district are these. Agree as an administrative team what exactly is meant by summative and what are the essentials to be included in a summative report. Agree as an, as an administrative team on one format for evaluations. Use the same rubrics district-wide. Remove or retain the categories of unsatisfactory, basic, proficient, distinguished, but be consistent. Review and discuss the changes listed by administrators to determine what changes, if any, should be made. Agree on how this will affect format. Consider buying software and accompanying technical support to maximize efficiency and consistency among schools. Provide training and practice opportunities, including calibration for all evaluators. Have the superintendent or his designee give feedback and coaching based on their summative reports to each evaluator individually at the end of each evaluation cycle. Boards want to be reassured that all teachers will be formally observed and evaluated in a timely fashion in keeping with the contract. At the end of each school year, consider providing the board with aggregated data from the schools indicating how many were evaluated the current year and how many are scheduled to be evaluated the following year. So I think basically what Sarah told Martin and I was that the one thing that she would suggest was that there needed to be more uniformity between the schools, you know, for the district as a whole.
Jim?
Yeah, I just want to add, there was a couple, I think, other positive points that she didn't, Sarah Denny didn't mention in commendations, but I thought were positive from her findings. One, that the rubrics that they measure for teacher performance correlate very well with the ends. And I thought that was an important crosswalk that she, she did for us. And the second is that the administrators, they recognize the strengths and the weaknesses of the system, and they had a number of good ideas that they thought would improve the system, the performance evaluation. So those I thought were two very good outcomes or, or pieces of information we gained from this.
So I think what we, where we should go is to really charge you, David, with coming back to us with how you're gonna get to these recommendations and address the, the issues that she brought up in terms of needing improvement.
So I think, you know, one, I appreciate, you know, again, I think this, anytime you have a opportunity to look a little bit more in-depth, always is helpful. And so I think that Sarah's work is informative and helpful, and I'm gonna say affirming. I think there's some suggestions in there that, you know, around providing the board some more aggregated data towards, towards the end will be helpful to you around assurance, around the practice of evaluation. And I think the other part that's important for me to note to you is that, and again, you'll, you'll be seeing a little bit more of our, kind of our rollout as, as an administrative group. As you know, I've talked to you about, we've retreated several times and have some work that we've identified that we're needing to work on professional development. And some of that was shared at convocation. Obviously, a lot of that was embedded in the, in the work of the in-services with the teachers. But we, as an administrative group, are working, are working hard, and again, Stuart with me and the rest of the central office and the administrators are looking at what are we doing in a transformational way? And this being a transformational method around how we can make sure instruction is happening with great fidelity, great connection for children. And so, right now, you know, in our plan, we definitely, and again, I wasn't at the administrative meeting, but part of the conversation was exactly that, and I was happy to see some of the dialogue that's happening. Things such as our evaluation, fidelity evaluation, looking at calibration of our, of our work. Again, I do think that one good point, and Stuart's actually told me about this, is that we don't have an electronic version. There was electronic version that was once available and it kind of trickled away and that, that particular business went out, and we've got to figure out a replacement where it can happen more appropriately. So again, I'm wanting to give you a little bit about some of our ongoing work and also, you know, some feedback to, you know, that I think there's some good suggestions there.
So if I can make a couple of comments, I, reading through that, the main message I came away with is that there are some great examples of best practices, but they aren't distributed and known and implemented uniformly across it. So it's, what I see is the potential for a great process, but that the major focus needs to be on it being uniform, whatever it is, so that it can be improved from a state of uniformity. That's my view. Okay, it's, it's, you know, if I were being evaluated, I would like to feel like I was being evaluated the same way everybody else was being evaluated. And I think that that report would raise a question in my mind that said, I don't know which end of the spectrum I'm on, okay? And I don't think we want our teachers to be there.
Oh, again, that's part of, as I said earlier, part of our work ahead is to, with fidelity, try to make sure.
Yeah, I just don't want to lose track of the uniformity issue, that's all.
No question, and I think, and I think I've.
And also buried in there are apparently some great best practices, okay?
Is there an opportunity, or would it be appropriate, to share these findings with your administrative team?
Oh, absolutely.
Cause it sounds like there's, I mean, it sounds like there's some great commendations there, and, you know, establishing a platform for transferring those best practices, too.
Absolutely. And again, part of this is, again, not to, you know, we have some things that were already are in play and planned.
Yeah.
Some of these will be some follow-up from the conversations here, and what are some of the things we can do around uniformity calibration? You know, there's, again, I think that this is a big area across, for us and certainly for others, around if we watch a piece of instruction, you know, or, or observe, how would you view that? How would you view that? If we're not anywhere near the same, then that's in part what Dan's talking about. And we know that that exists, based on the way in which you're observing and what location of the, of the room you might be, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into that collection.
Just a, one other thing I thought of is, one thing she said to us is that among the ranks that we have, there are a couple stellar people that just do this really well with a lot of ease, and she suggested would be great trainers in the future, so she didn't tell us who they were or anything like that, but good to know that we have, you know, that resource.
This is an area, so yes, I think we, we do. We've, we've looked for people that have been out and around that can come in and help us, and that has been problematic for us as well. We, we used to have a trainer within the county area who actually would come in under this, this current, we, we don't have somebody like that, and we may need to start that back up, cause there's others that are in the county that are, that are using the same, many are using the same evaluation, or I should say similar evaluation. We've, we've adapted this, obviously, as you know, based on the position in which you're in, so.
So the phase of this project, having taken quite a while to get here, was really answering the question of are we doing things right? And the board had tabled the second phase of our initial conversations of are we doing the right things? Meaning are there opportunities to revise an evaluation system? And I know it's come up in past board meetings that we should also be looking at performance evaluation systems beyond just our teaching staff as well. So I guess I'd just open it up and say, what's the board's feedback or pleasure on some of the open topics that are a follow-on to this first phase?
I mean, I think, I think that the administrators identified things that could be done to improve the system. I mean, the, the answering or putting forward some opinions on the, are we doing the right things? And there's, I think, there is a whole list.
Yeah, there's a bulleted list, yeah.
On page four and five of the report of, of areas that they think they can, there can be improvement. So I think the next step is to, is to hear back on a game plan from David over the, over the next few meetings, or one of the, I'm not, we'll look at that when we look at scheduling, but to understand how to, how we're going to implement these recommendations or at least consider them, cause one of the recommendations is reviewing and discussing the changes listed by the administrators. You know, and I looked, I mean, I looked through the list and I couldn't think of, they, they seemed to hit a lot of the areas that you hear about. How much should student outcomes be part of it? And, and it should be a broad consideration of student outcomes or student growth model kind, rather than just one test. I mean, there's a lot of things that I thought were great ideas, and if, I'd like to understand from David, you know, the game plan, plan for considering those. I mean, that would be.
That almost seems like, you know, the starting point for phase two.
Right, right, right. And, you know, and they're obviously the experts, not, not us, and we should see what, but it should actually be an initiative, I think, given the breadth of the ideas on how to improve, you know, it, it should, shouldn't be lost, and it should be an initiative, but it should be an administration initiative. I don't think at this point it, it's a board initiative.
And how about other employee groups?
I mean, I think we should, we need to do something similar for, I think, starting with understanding the performance evaluation of administrators by David, and then talk about what to do with staff after that, perhaps.
So I, I would be remiss if I didn't try to help you with kind of our policy governance lens a little bit, right? And so while I think what we've done is, is good and appropriate around kind of our modified direct inspection, but what I would say is where in the monitoring report process and evidence, right, is what I'm trying to think of, where I could contain this. I'm not wanting to dispel your, your, your wants and needs, but where in the, so I'm just trying to wear that lens a little bit.
Treatment of staff.
Right, and so evidence under treatment of staff and categories maybe by which we would have, you know, and some of this could be factored into the evidence. Otherwise, I, I worry that it's, then it has branches off of, that then myself or whomever follows me will be confused around, you know, the embedded practice. So I'm just thinking about, and I, I don't, I don't have a perfect answer what that would look like, but I'm, I want to just challenge ourselves to, you know, and again, Martin's usually our, our policy governance person who says, well, I think this would fall in treatment of staff. And how are we evaluating, for instance, and I'm just thinking about that in, in a monitoring evidence phase.
I think it'd be part of that report, part of that monitoring report.
Yeah.
You know, to report on all the groups, because when you think about that most of our resources are put into staff, we should really be hearing about the evaluations.
So, and I, and again, I don't want to, this was kind of a, a, a direct inspection that I think would be listed as evidence, right? And then part of the actions would be what am I doing as a result and kind of my evidence base to you, so.
Well, yeah, you bring up a good point. I think, I, I think this particular one has evolved so much over time that we're kind of straddling the fence around just being able to pull up a little bit now that there are, there has been an assessment done, there are specific recommendations that are gonna lead into a phase two of doing the right things. But I, I think what you heard from me is we don't want to forget that there's a whole other group of employees that we don't know what the assessment would, even the, the audit has occurred. So I think it's a little bit of, yeah, we could, we can, I think we can turn to you and say, in treatment of staff, I think you, you've got some guidance now on metrics on that monitoring report specific to the teacher evaluations. We don't want to lose sight of the fact that there's a whole group of employees beyond that.
So what I, what I'm wanting to say within the treatment of staff, let's say, monitoring report, what I think this leads us to is that in the evidence, I would not only, I would include all employee data, right, evidence, kind of as you said, number of people, number of value, you know, and so we'd have some, some data that would be in there, is there a plan in place for professional development, calibrating, you know, I don't, I don't know necessarily how to articulate this, but for you that then could see how many have been, this is an area, and maybe you might want to circle that and say we'd like to do another kind of modified direct inspection in that, in that particular area.
I guess I would, I would suggest under treatment of staff that we go back to.
It's a good reminder.
Well, we go back to our future agenda items, where I think at some point it's policy consideration, performance evaluation, it's the second one. I think we could add a, a sub-enumeration, a number five that talks to the need for performance evaluations. I'm happy if, if the board is okay to work with somebody else to come up with drafting language that we can.
Well, and actually, if you turn the page over, we do have a new bullet point on performance evaluation of administrators.
Right, I see that one, that one's, yeah, another issue, but just looking at this and, and actual, yeah, cause I don't think, you'd be shoehorning it into the treatment of staff right now. It, it certainly falls under the, the overall with respect to the treatment of paid and volunteer staff, the superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions that are untimely, unfair, undignified, disorganized or vague. I think under that, certainly not providing, providing feedback on performance and what kind of professional development should be done is part of it, but it's not enumerated in the detailed list of four items. I think we could.
Yeah, I think, so I'm, I'm just, again, when you look at continuity, my worry is if it's, you know, if we didn't do it that way, then it's likely that it, we're gonna report on it a few times, and then, you know, things change, and then you won't get that. And I think it's an, if it's an important enough component to treatment of staff and a subcategory, then it should be there. Again, you may not like my interpretation, and that's, that's all part of the process by which we go through.
So it sounds like you're recommending a subcommittee look at policy consideration.
Yeah, and if, I think it would seem to make sense that would fit in treatment of staff, but I think having a detailed policy there would be helpful. At least, let's look at some language at one of the next couple of meetings, I'm happy to draft something.
So do we have to do that when we're doing treatment of staff?
Well, not, I mean, we, it will, we'll review it at that time when it comes up again, but the fact that it's in our parking lot and we've just had a component of it reviewed, I think we can do the work anytime and just be ready for the next monitoring report.
It just takes two or three, how many readings does it take? I mean, I think the first, the first meeting would just to be getting some initial language out, may not even be considered a first reading. How would that work unless I can get you language and it would be considered first reading?
Well, we, if, if we got it on there, we can put it on here. I mean, part of what we want to pay attention to is the monitoring report process timeline, cause what happens is, you know, now we're gonna get into the November budget, you know, and then we start getting busy, so.
What is, do we have the master calendar? What's the next treatment of staff?
So just to clarify, can we change policy language when we're not reviewing that much ahead?
Yeah, as long as you've done the number of readings that you have.
This is not my most updated one either, unfortunately, but.
I don't have it either.
Well, I don't have the most updated one either.
Monitoring, treatment of staff, August, I think we, two point two, so it's an annual one in August, which is what led that to, but I have to check, this is not the most updated one, I, we took names off, so that's maybe not so bad. July, revised July. I'll look, so yeah, so if, I would say if we have changes to the work, then, again, this is where I get, I get mixed up, right? Remember what we did when there was a known violation from the board? Then I bring it back with corrective action.
Right.
If it's something that I rec, then it's worked into the next monitoring report, maybe with just information, but it's worked into the monitor report. It's whether or not this is in the right place, right? So.
So maybe you can update us next time on that, but it sounds like we might be able to take that off a future agenda item and work on it in a subcommittee fashion.
So Meg, can you just make note that updated calendar for our board calendar? Just to check on two point two, treatment of staff. Thanks.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move on to administrative reports.
So the fundraising, again, bad, bad time for me to be out. This was available to me. I do have the fundraising report. I've taken a look at it, but I'm not yet ready to give it to you, so. So I will work, the committee's done considerable amount of work. There's a few questions that they have of me before, you know, they take kind of that final step. So, and again, I haven't been available to them, so I need to give them a little bit of time and then I'll push it out to you folks prior to the next meeting right off and you can be able to really digest this. Again, a lot of, a lot of good work has been in play, plus a lot of what I'm going to say, you know, we've been holding people accountable to some of our work as well, so of the previous kind of agreements. This is not an easy process because there's so many things that are going on within a school community on an ongoing basis, but we know that, you know, this is needed. And again, I think there's some really good changes here. So allow me the opportunity to share soon with you, probably next week or so, I'll send it out so you can be able to view it and then we'll have it on the agenda for further discussion. I apologize for this delay as you've been waiting for it for a bit.
So we can move that to 10-2 as well?
Yep.
Any questions?
So Lisa, I know came for this specific thing, right? So maybe in the future, we just have to take it off at the beginning of the meeting so that people don't stay. Sorry, Lisa, yeah.
No problem. Lisa, I mean, is there, unless there's something, I mean, if you'd like to just provide any, any questions or?
No, I just, I, for the high school boosters, the issue of the lack of the fall sports teams being able to use the gold card this season came up with us because one of the teams had planned on using the money from what they were going to get from the gold card and had made a financial commitment and then found they couldn't sell the gold card, so they came to us looking for the money. So, you know, we were kind of on a, just not in the loop on what was happening and had a lot of questions and are anxious to see what the policy is relative to, you know, what it is that we do.
The gold cards were those that were through a third party and there was, there's a profit that goes through the third party and again, we're trying to be really mindful of those processes and in addition to the folks that were asking for money.
And it's, you know, it's a timing thing.
I mean, one of the things that I will say, and again, I don't, I mean, I don't want to go on a bird walk too much, but when there are programs, and again, the boosters, I want to just say, have been enormously supportive of so much of what we do here at the school. But I want to be really clear that from my perspective, if it's a, if it's a required or needed device something, then, and it relies upon a fundraising effort, then I have concern with that, right? If it's a required component for the activity to take place, I think that's something that we need to support.
In the budget.
In the budget.
In the operating budget.
In the operating budget, right. If it's something that's above and beyond and there's some level of equity across, because again, some teams are large numbers, some are small. If there are wants that are, what I would say, reasonable for some level of extra, then I think that's appropriate. But, you know, maybe my interpretation of that and some others is not necessarily the same. But I think if you need it to participate, then pretty clear. As far as the fringes, that is where it begins to break down a little bit. So again, we're really trying to pay really close attention and we're not wanting to have people waiting or, you know, or feeling, you know, that we don't, we don't care about them. So allow us this opportunity to really, again, our current fundraising practices are in play, although there's a few that are, that don't conclude the, you know, the gold card situation, so. Thank you, Lisa.
So prior to the next meeting, we'll likely have at least the draft report for a final report issued?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to agenda item 12, 2.4.
There were some questions from the board that I guess never got to the board, so here they come. Some questions and they all relate to 2.4. Dan had asked them.
Thank you for coming, Carsten.
Oh, no problem, thank you.
Hi. Yeah, hope we won.
So as John said, some questions came in around the, around the 2.4 and I think just give you an opportunity to read over those a little bit and the responses. I think specific to 2.4 has to do with some of the changes that have come.
How do you want to proceed through this?
If I can make a couple of comments, most if not all of these questions came from me. The one, the one thing that I, that I would hope we could, and maybe there's some promise in what the answer says here. I found it incredibly confusing that the fiscal periods that are being talked about span three different fiscal years. So if there's a way that we can think of to get these things more aligned and consistent with you having the right information from the board at the right time, I would encourage us to try to find that. I don't know what the answer to that is, I understand what was done, but it's.
I think I know the answer. We have since, the first few times we did this report, it was over a period that varied and now we've got it down to a period of time. But in that time, we, fiscal 14, we incurred revenues and spent money and had that financial activity. During that time, we also get the audit and it finalizes things. So we started and it's on our schedule in the late winter to have a 2.4 just for the audit. So, and it answers the same question. So we could, we could just isolate audit questions and do it on that report and on this report just show the estimated, our preliminary numbers for fiscal 14. Because the audit always goes back to the prior year. So I think that was a really good point. It would, the very first, the very first policy talks, has evidence from two different fiscal years and basically one is redundant. We've done that in the audit before, last April, I believe. So if we, if we make this report for activity of fiscal 14 and it comes two months after that date ended, it makes a lot of sense.
Can I ask a question just along those lines? In the evidence for policy number one, specifically number two, talking about fiscal year 2014 results, $452,000 subject to audit. But then I look at policy number eight and it has the, in the preliminary results of fiscal year 2014 fiscal year and it has a number of $790,000. Those two are confusing to me. It's number three on page eight, you know, under evidence for policy number eight.
Connect it to two.
And number two, under policy number one. Could you reconcile those?
Sure, if you go to exhibit 1A.
Well, I had to actually look at the exhibits.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the way to answer it. And let's look at policy eight first. If fiscal 14 results, what we're trying to get at is how much money is left over usable, but how did we perform in fiscal 14 specifically? So the opening fund balance was $1,098,000. The excess of revenue over expenses for the FY14 is the 452,329 and that, that does tie back to reference number two. Policy one, number two. And then, so that means an ending fund balance, unaudited, but of one and a half million dollars. And then, so that's as of June 30. And then we take it the next step forward, moving ahead. We've already included $760,000 in the budget for 14, or for 15.
All right, wait, one sec, right there, can you, so that $760,000, that was not the full carryover though from fiscal year 2015? That's why we are ending up with more than $452,000 for the following year?
No, the 452 is strictly activity in the current year. New revenues versus new, less expenses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I.
It's really confusing.
Yeah, so the ending fund balance of 1.551 million dollars, that's made up of what? The 452,329 and?
The opening fund balance of July 1, 2013.
Okay, and that opening balance, which was 1.1 million or whereabouts, of that $760,000 was budgeted as carryover in the fiscal year 2015 budget.
Yes, and it's, it is hard to reconcile that because the opening fund balance is the fund balance, but some of those, some of that $1,098 is reserved. And so I could probably take it another line down and say, of the 1.1 million dollars, X amount is reserved and there's a, on the financial statements, meaning that the balance left is $760,000.
Right, I was just trying to figure out where the extra $240,000 came from.
This is a reserve fund, right?
And that's.
Yep, and I think, we need one more statement that I didn't put here to show you the trail.
Okay, all right, so I think I understand.
The balance sheet would show, the balance sheet from the audit shows where, what's reserved and what's available. So that's, that's missing. It's hard to put them all down, I don't know how much you really need until we get to this point.
Well, yeah, no, this is helpful. So I mean, it's essentially, it says revenues exceed expenditures, that's what 452,000 is described as.
Right.
And $790,000 is the available revenue source subject to audit, which is made up of the 452,000 plus the 240,000, which is from the year before that.
Right, yeah.
Okay. I'm glad you said I, because I was going to be in trouble.
So can I ask a question about on page five, on detail policy six, under the evidence, number two, it starts with on page 80, and then the very last line of that, it says, the next audit for FY14 will be available in, shouldn't that be December 2014, 20?
Sure, sure should.
I'm just trying to, okay, so it should be.
We're just trying to hold on to time a little bit.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure it out, okay? And then same with, the next paragraph, it says, the auditors were here, is that right? They're here on March 21st, 2013?
Took a whole.
No, they were here 2014, weren't they?
That took 14 months.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's right.
The exhibit that came, exhibit 10 is, came after 14 months. They had some turnover, it's a very long story, but.
Okay, you don't have to tell me.
I'm thankful we got the report finally, yes.
So, and then on page eight, under detail policy eight, the evidence, and it starts in the FY 2013 audit and then other funds was $296,784. That was the same number, the same exact number last year? How can that be?
You're saying that this is an evidence.
The balance, in addition, the balance in other funds, I'm just, I'm just, I went, you know, I tried to look back at last year's report or the last time we reviewed it and it seems like that number should have changed.
Well, it's 2013 audit, I have exhibit one, that's what the numbers are.
Your question is close to the, that's.
It just seems, it's the, like, the exact number. I mean, it may be, it is, that would be.
Did the prior year say 2012 audit?
No, it said, it was last time we reviewed it, so it said 2013.
So the same audit, get the same number?
It must have been the same one.
Okay, yeah, because it was 14 months that it took, yeah.
It's a different audit. I think that's a different audit than the one that took 14 months.
Well, I don't, if you look at, if you look at page nine of the yellow markup with all the, it was a different number and it's, it wasn't the same number.
On fund balance.
Okay.
So on page 18 of your exhibit one.
Yep.
The balance, fund balance, July 1, John, is that?
Right.
On page 18.
Right.
Exhibit one, fund balance, July 1.
It was 1,821,542.
But then other governmental funds.
And yet, and at the end of the year, it went down to 906,000, so. So it is changed.
So in addition, the balance in other funds was the 296.
Yeah.
Okay.
As articulated.
But that is the same that was in 2012.
Yeah, it just seems off, yeah, I, maybe, I'm just probably having a hard time understanding, John.
Yeah, I'm looking at the strikeout version as well.
Wasn't that the same number?
Yeah, it's the same number, but.
So does that need to be reconciled or?
I don't know.
I'll look at it, I, I don't know. I mean, it's the right number, so.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
John.
Yes, that's your exact answer. That, that should be 192,721. I understand now.
192.
721.
On number eight?
Policy eight, evidence one.
Evidence number one.
Yes, yes.
So I have a more of a higher level question, which is usually not mine, I'll go right smack into the detail. Based on kind of the disconnect between the audit and financial reporting and kind of what you just described, John, as well as some new information that, since we're reviewing this policy, I might have, I don't know, should we have expected, David, you to come back on 2.410 and say, I'm going to recommend a change there? On accepting non-resident tuition students?
Yeah, I think absolutely, and again.
So I mean, the legislation passed.
Absolutely. I think one of the things that, you know, that triggered me is what legislative activity passage could possibly affect our current policies? And that's under monitoring, and you're right. Because this, you know.
Are you talking about number three there?
Number 10, under 2.4, accept non-resident student, tuition students unless tuition is being paid.
I'm kind of going with the front page, is that, are you, is that the same one?
It's the same word.
Yeah, same one.
Oh, yeah.
You see, so now under the, the passage of Act 129, it says, money does not follow the students. That does not say that we can't enter into a conversation to establish agreement. But right now, we're in a situation where we are, we'd be in violation of that, right?
So because we're grandfathering some kids out of that, you know, we still have kids who are, who we decided to like, let continue. Doesn't that have to be delineated here in some way?
Right.
Right.
Because eventually, it's going to have to end.
Well, we, we, it's not like I haven't delineated, we've had conversations, right?
No, I know, but.
As far as it being within the board practice, they're embedded in the practice, but under our choice agreement, conversations and decisions. But this is, you know, when you read this, it says, these are things I can't do, so, what we've been doing is actually coming, I mean, coming in front of the board.
Right.
But it seems that we, given the legislative act, legislative directive, right, policy, law, now, we need to make that change.
Can, can we ask the V S B A if they have some model language for that? Because presumably, they caught this before Dan or Elizabeth caught it.
I don't, I don't.
Maybe, or maybe not.
No, I actually looked around a little bit, and it is a question in. To them, I've looked around, and who else has, has anybody else made the change, and currently under that monitoring. So, part of our work around the V S B A with our, you know, our work ahead with that, scheduled in November, you know, this is another area that we need to, I think we need to ask.
So.
I'm, I'm, I'm wanting to get clarity on it sooner than now.
So, when you say that last line, in, under number three in the evidence, gradually the tuition collected will decline until there will be no net revenue to the district in FY 2017, is that when all of our kids have gone through at that point?
Right, those ones that are currently in the system that we've, that we have grandfathered, is that right, John?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
2017, everything seems like far away, but it's not, yes, 2017.
Along those lines, is it, if this is coming back to us, which maybe with some of these changes, maybe this, I don't know, if we could actually have what the loss of revenue was going to be between now and 2017 for each of those? I know it's come up before, but this would be a good place to, to have that, so we understand the impact. And as far as for?
What number are you on?
I'm in the same number, policy 10, looking at the evidence that Julie was just talking about. And, and I guess the other question is, what would the game plan be for changing the actual policy? What would be the timeline, and how?
For us, you mean?
Yeah. Should we get it from V S B A? Should we have, should I, with somebody else, I'd be volunteered to take a crack at it?
Well, currently, you know, we've done a lot with testifying in front of the legislature.
No, I don't mean about, I mean just changing this policy, if we feel that this policy is no longer valid because of Act 129.
Yeah, I think it's, it's up to us, it's, and then a warrant process, you know, when we make the change, and I then come up with the reinterpretation, and then.
I'm just trying to remember, going to the higher level, on the process of doing this, do we usually have the administration give us proposed policy language, or, I think it's the, we have in the past, the board comes up with a new language because we're setting the policy, right?
When you, when you came up with these?
Right.
You, you worked, but we worked collaboratively. We provided you the models, and then you made some tweaks, and added, and that's pretty, pretty consistent, although I think the model policy work across the state that I see falls pretty, you know, pretty consistent with what, what you see here, from, from my perspective.
So, I guess my suggestion is that, again, I'd be happy to be on the committee, I don't have to be, but if, I mean, if there's going to be a couple of board members collaborating with you to come up with proposed language for this policy, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that would be good, I think we should start with the V S B A and ask, you know, how they're, how they're handling things like this, or what was the kind of recommended, and then take from them, maybe that would be an included, if you're interested, and we would, and that could be a conversation with, with someone at the V S B A.
Yeah.
And then, go from there. Inform the board, and if there's then a process that we need to go through to do that, we'll, we'll report back.
I have a comment on the evidence in detail policy 10 as well. Do we need to put anything in there about the big picture students that we're allowing?
Diane asked that question, and I believe it was.
I didn't read them, sorry.
No.
All right.
No, no, that's good.
Good question.
Well, I felt since I was the one that didn't vote in favor of it, that I already asked the question.
So, you mean it's evidence, that, that on June so-and-so, it was a policy, or the decision was made to accept for non-paying students?
Right, well, because it says that we'll accept non-re, that we've, except non-resident, we, I can't even say this, non-resident students unless tuition is being paid by other Vermont school districts, except that we are.
So, we're in violation, really?
Right.
Because of the exceptions.
Well, yeah, that's why we have to look at the policy.
Right.
Right.
But it's, we're transparent about the evidence and what we're doing, it's just the evidence goes in contradiction with the policy.
I mean, essentially, I would think the policy is going to be something along the lines of, subject to the annual allotment of spaces that the board votes in, they will not have any more, you know, any non-paying tuition students, so, it's probably fairly straightforward.
Or, or, except, except as.
Unless.
Approved by the, by the board, so.
To exceed.
Sounds like Dan's the other committee member on this.
I think he just signed up. So, do we have to report violation on this policy because of that?
Well, we're letting you know in evidence, but I, I don't know.
I think it's a violation.
It's not your fault, but you do, you're in violation.
Right, because it's not consistent with the wording of the policy.
But it's not actually in the evidence, where is it in the evidence that we're accepting the big picture students?
Well, big picture is lumped into the choice.
Yeah.
It, but it's not?
Well, that's what we've, essentially, it's been part of the, under the umbrella of choice.
Okay, because we've kind of looked at it separately with the, the cap and the number of students, you know, we look at it kind of as a separate school, but it's been our practice, so, I didn't know if we had to specify.
But the bottom line is that we have some number of students who are tuition students where there's no money, so there's a violation.
And we're in violation.
So, is this coming back?
Well, I think that the direction is that it will come back, but in the meantime, we're going to do some little bit of work, Martin and I here, maybe Dan, to connect with the S B A around what are the kind of processes by which we.
Good enough when I volunteer myself.
Well, I can take you up, yeah, but, but the processes that we need to go through to, to make a change to the, to our policy. And also, I think, what are other, what are others doing? Because again, this is, this is not benign just to us, so, and then come back with, you know, the updated evidence that follows, right?
And I had a couple more comments as well, on detail policy number six, the number three, the item, the State Agency of Education, I mean, I was wondering if that was evidence of non-compliance, I mean, and if not in policy number six somewhere else, because it seems like, kind of, there were a whole long laundry list of things that seemed to be needing of a fix in exhibit 10. 10, is that right, exhibit 10? And there's this long list, it seems that, that.
But were they over?
Policy six, you're on page five.
On the policy six, page five, the evidence, number three, the State Agency of Education, special education auditors were here, and they found a whole bunch of problems, you know, I have no idea if they're big, small problems or whatnot, but it would seem that that would suggest.
But they have resolutions.
Are there resolutions?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, right? Aren't these?
Yeah.
No, no, that's not, that, I'm looking at the exhibit 10.
Oh, I don't.
Which is the letter from the state of Vermont, which has 17 different compliance issues, from, you know, most of us talking in.
But this is.
In language I didn't understand, but.
Are they specifically one of these two things?
Well, that's, that, well, that's part of my question, is, is, I saw number three, and I looked at this letter, and I thought, how is there not a non-compliance issue here somewhere? And maybe there isn't, and I was wondering, is it in, or is it a non-compliance with detail policy number six, allowing other government ordered payments or filings to be overdue or inaccurately filed? I don't know, I didn't know which of these 17 items may qualify as a, you know, government ordered payment being overdue or inaccurately filed. So, I guess, one of a couple things, either this letter shows some sort of non-compliance, maybe it's not non-compliance with policy number six, or this letter shouldn't be there as evidence under policy number six.
Well, there's, there's probably forty other pages that go with this review, it was a review that only gets done maybe every eight years by I D E A, and there were no fines or penalties, or requests to reimburse any, return any funds.
Okay.
Which is what?
So, I mean, not that there weren't problems, and we could, we could talk about how we reorganized special education office help, to, we've done a lot of, we've done a lot of things.
Well, then, then I guess the answer is that, well, you're providing this information, and then I look at the attachment, and I say, well, there's all these non-compliance issues, I don't know enough about this stuff to know if it really is non-com, showing non-compliance with policy number six, and it sounds like you're saying there wasn't non-compliance with policy six.
I would say that the, the review that they do in January to follow up on this, that'll be a test of whether we're in real compliance at that point.
Right. But where is the non-compliant, I mean, does this letter show any non-compliance with detail six?
Is there, is anything overdue or inaccurately filed?
No, no, that's, that's, those are, like, you can look at other districts, bigger districts that are close by, that didn't pay their payroll taxes.
Right.
Those are big items that are routine in, in number, in, in the checklist of checking those off.
Right, right.
But there's always going to be, there's always going to be government agents come in here and do specialized audits.
Right.
That the board needs to know what the results were, and get an estimation if we're non-compliant.
Yeah, I agree with that completely.
And even if there was one item here, if you, yeah, it's, it's a little fine line, I mean.
Yeah, but, but it's where, it's where that evidence was presented, and, and I guess that's, and I'm not sure, I looked through here, and I couldn't figure out really where this, I mean, yes, we should know about this audit.
Right.
Is this the place?
To put it.
To put it.
If it is the place, could you, could you put a statement afterward that says, the administration has analyzed that and determined that there is no significant, that none of these are significant in the context of this.
That are in violation of government ordered payments, yeah.
But I, I understand your point, some of these things you can't tell until they're reported back, so.
Right.
You may come back, say, look, it looked okay at this point in the game, but there may be a surprise at the end, because you don't know what you're, what you're really going to say.
Right.
But, you know, you can, but you can point out that it's here, that there are some potential issues there, and, you know, there's nothing in there that you think deserving of it being non-compliant at this point in the game, but we all have been sort of advised that.
This is so broad.
Well, yeah, it's just, it's just.
It could be a skunk in that pot.
Right.
Does this letter really have?
Have anything to do, probably not.
Well, does it, and does it have anything really to do with financial condition and activities? I mean, it seems to be primarily how well the I D E A programs are being run, is that?
Which is a financial condition.
Okay, all right, well, that's fine, that's fine.
It's an activity, I mean.
If you look at just above the, the list of items, it says, you know, the following issues that need to be addressed for Southland School District to be in full compliance with federal requirements and the use of federal funds. And detail policy six says, allow tax payments or other government ordered payments or filings to be overdue or inaccurately filed. So, I think this does have a connection to this.
I think we're shoehorning it into that detailed policy number six.
Well, I think, I think it fits based on the description Diane just gave, but I will say that the detailed list of items feels a lot like financial controls to me, just overall financial controls, which I'm not sure where.
This is, well, and, and this is, I hate to split hairs, but I, this letter's talking about federal requirements for the use of funds, policy six is talking about our payment of, of federal monies, and, and state monies. So, I mean, I, I mean, it's, I buy that it fits within financial conditions and activities, it may not fit under one of the enumerated 10 items.
In the general policy?
Yeah, that means just at the end, when you're talking about the general policy, you know, this is kind of, it can be a catch-all, because this is with respect, the policy says, with respect to the actual ongoing financial condition and activities, the superintendent shall not cause or allow the development of financial jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in ends policies. I mean, that's broad enough that.
Where's our, what's the policy on grants? We have a separate detail policy on grants.
But that, but the I D E A isn't really a grant.
Well, it's described that way, yes, yeah.
Is it?
Do, do we know what the grant policy is under?
I'm not sure. It might be under budget one, 25.
Yeah, the 25 has a lot of the similar financial stuff, yes, and we do that next?
Yeah, yep, starting tomorrow.
Financial planning and budgeting.
It may be under there.
I'm wondering if this falls under the grant?
Mm-hmm.
But I can't remember the language on the grant one.
Well, I, along that lines, though, detail policy six, we've, we've shown the table of filings and that kind of thing, and that's evidence number one, but if we pull these other things out of here, then I should probably pull number two out. The audit finding, showing that there are no federal financial statement findings or questioning costs, because that's not a, that's not a payment on time either.
Right.
No, yeah.
So, maybe we've created evidence that's too broad.
And maybe, I, I kind of, because we have these policy reports, if I don't, if I don't put them here, I feel like I've neglected my duty to tell you about them, so it's hard to, hard to find, hard to put them in.
I agree that that's important stuff for us to have.
It's about whether the, it's in the right location, though, maybe, right?
What I am suggesting is that it can be put in there, just in the, under the general catch-all policy, if it doesn't fit within the 10.
I think, I think that's a constructive suggestion.
I see.
Just, you know, this is about.
So, go in the summation, you're saying in the very end.
What we want here is that you're saying things on time.
Right.
That you've filled out the filings correctly.
Right, right.
And, you know, if there are other things that you think we should know about.
So be the main policy wording, right?
That could affect some of these things.
Yeah.
Put them in that catch-all.
Any incidental stuff.
Okay, that makes sense, yeah.
As I always continue to harp almost every time, you know, I point out that those 10, you know, it says before that, without limiting the scope of the foregoing by this enumeration.
Exactly.
You know, that means that, that's a broader, that broad language captures things that are not within those 10 enumerations.
Yeah.
So.
And I'll, I'll make it clear that the, the final viewpoint on this will come in January, so that.
Yeah, you could put that checkpoint in, because it's, because that's part of the action, and part of the thing is if it turns out to be non-compliant, it's always, the question is, is the plan adequate or not?
Yeah, right.
I did have one more, too.
Go ahead.
But it's very short. Page nine, superintendent's interpretation, the new language there with the exception of detail policy number nine regarding the follow-up of collections on accounts received with us. I don't think, I mean, that's evidence, that's not interpretation, I think. That's just regarding evidence for this one report. Do you understand what I'm saying?
You're on page eight.
I'm on page nine, on detail policy number, no, main policy wording, superintendent's interpretation of the main policy wording.
Yeah, gotcha.
And that just seems to be evidence, not interpretation, that new language that you put in there.
Yeah, I see where you did it, but.
It's fine, given what we've just talked about.
Yeah, it should be in the evidence, but not in interpretation. That's all I had.
Okay. Barring any additional comments, it sounds like we've got some follow-up work on this one, and we'll put it on the agenda.
I love this policy stuff, huh, don't you guys?
You guys like.
I'm still not used to doing it together. I think we're going to evaluate that.
I, I do, you know, John-
I think it was very helpful, I think the people who are still wait-watching.
Well, I, I appreciate, you know, the feedback and the close look at this, I think it's really important, and John's, you know, really in-depth work and his staff to bring the exhibits together, it's not, this is not easy work, but it's important, right? Given our financial stewardship that we've continued to know is really, really important, so.
Well, it's a good, it's good information.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item fourteen, setting the agenda for the October second meeting.
So we need to make sure we get fundraising on there.
And we wanted to include the Education Funding Reform Resolution discussion.
If, if there's time on this meeting, could we potentially schedule the first reading of the new language on the staff policy regarding performance evaluations, or is it just too much?
You know, we have two-point-two on this agenda.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
That's, why is that on there, David?
Because he had to bring it back to us.
Continued, because we haven't finished it.
Oh, so we've got another reason to continue it.
But should we, should we also, wouldn't we need a separate-
Well, we are-
Agenda item if we were doing the first reading of a policy?
Change? Well, we could push it back, so we're in monitoring, so we need to pull it out of monitoring to push, you know, or keep monitoring and then-
It could be two separate things.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I think it needs to get added to the top agenda for a change, right?
Yeah.
So two-point-two.
Are you, so you're starting Compensation and Benefits, two-point-eight next time?
That's the plan, but I think we may want to, given our agenda carryover of two-point-four, we may not want to do that.
I wonder if, we never did schedule a retreat slash work session. Is that something that we should think about, David?
You folks have been meeting, you know, you've met a lot, so I want to just be sensitive to that, you have a busy schedule. Part of our, our work is so that you don't need to necessarily have a whole lot of, that we sequence these, John.
We were just making sure you get the enrollment back on there for the high school teachers.
Why don't we- Why don't we put a, just on a future agenda item, retreat discussion, we can take the policy consideration off. And it may be, we want to start putting together what a retreat agenda would look like. My, I'm kind of guessing as we go into budgeting season, it might be an effective use of board time to fold some of that preliminary discussion into retreat setting.
So you want to add under future agenda items?
Just retreat, yeah, date and agenda. Anything else on the October second agenda?
So we need to bring thirteen back, right, John, the escrow, that one will be back, yeah.
Do we consider the municipal planning grant up on the airport thing, taken care of with the steering committee?
Right.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll just, yeah, we can take that off, yeah.
It's nice to see these check marks disappear.
Yeah.
Maybe we should keep scoring how many?
How many, how many?
Yeah, who wins? Okay. Anything on, else on future agenda items? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item sixteen, consider the minutes of the August twenty-seventh meeting. Any changes or comments?
I'd like to make a suggestion that just for, for ease of reading, that, that after the executive session is closed, that we put a new title in there saying Public Session or something like that.
Just delineate it with a line or something?
Just so that it's-
So you don't get confused. So, yeah, we can-
So that it's clear that it's two separate sessions, okay?
Yeah.
Good. With that change, those minutes are approved in the September third minutes? Comments, additions?
Same suggestion.
Okay, we'll carry that forward. Seeing no objections, those are approved. Any additional questions or comments on A P orders ten, eleven, and Turning Points eighty-four? Seeing none, we'll move to Agenda Item eighteen, we have an A P order in the amount of fifty-one thousand and seven dollars. Need a quick update on that?
John, do you mind doing that?
Sure. The Nagley and Chason is, is our contract, general contractor. It's been a, it's been a really good experience with them, they've worked really hard to get our conference room and our teacher room upstairs ready for the start of school. And I've actually been impressed with them and the work at Door Whittier to keep this on schedule. We do have a schedule that shows that the, the building will be buttoned up by the end of first part of October, all the brick and, and that kind of thing. And then the, the elevator itself's been ordered, so we, we really anticipate this being done on time. And with some, we found some real areas where we're not insulated. And, and I know that everybody here is coming in that middle school door, and you think you're coming into a sauna or more. And also, there was just a space between the gym and the, that hallway where things had shifted over time and you could just, surprised birds weren't coming in. And we've been in meetings upstairs where it's been really cold, that's, that was the reason. So there's some more insulation work, there'll be a change order in the magnitude of around nine thousand dollars. We have contingency for that, so, long story short, they've been great. Details, insurance, all the, all the, the fine points have been covered.
But the fact of the matter, it's over fifty, and that's why it's in front of you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we can get an update to it.
So do I have a motion to approve the A P order in the amount of fifty-one thousand seven dollars to Nagley and Chase Construction? Second? Did somebody second? Any other, other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, Board Self-Evaluation, take a couple minutes to go through that. So can I sign this, in case we get changed?
You could, you may want to just wait.
Okay.
You can, you get a chance and then you sign, it's fine. This is where the line throwing me the minutes, right? There we go.
Yeah.
I say yes, I think I know what you're talking about now.
It's changing to, to the public session?
Yeah.
I know you're scary, I'm good.
Oh, yeah.
It is, it is interesting to make-
Yeah, yeah.
You know, whatever the rip.
I don't know.
Yeah, I do, yeah, sorry about that.
It's through the population a year ago to the-
Does anybody understand?
Because my broadcast says that it's about three or four changes. That's it.
All right, Martin, do you want to report out on our progress?
Oh, yeah, all right, okay, okay. I, yes. We have all agrees in the School Board Meeting Report, except for I disagree on the board's focus and deliberations were in support of directional achievement of its ends policy at a cost we believe the community could afford. There's a disagree and a no comment on, or no opinion on that one. I have two comments, one is that don't have, that we didn't have costs information for the master planning or the, for the P R people. And we have also another comment, that was a great discussion of Policy two-point-four. I won't tell you who made that comment. All right, then we have for the School Board Meeting, I'm just looking for the non-agrees. We have some disagree regarding data reports were provided to the board in advance of the meeting in support of deliberations and required action. We have, in fact, two people disagreed with that, and, and one person had no opinion. And then the board questions were first anticipated and second responded to in a thorough manner. We have a disagree and a no opinion on that one. And then the agenda was followed and adequate time allowed for board discussion with respect to the published schedule to the public. We have two disagrees on that one as well. So anyway, I will leave these for now.
Sounds like we have a little room to improve, huh?
Yes. So I had a other question before we adjourned. Are we going to go back into executive session for a few minutes about collective bargaining to get next steps since we don't meet for a couple of weeks?
You can.
Can we do that? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn our public session and go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're adjourned.